Okay.
All right.
All right, good morning. Let's call the Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting for November 6, 2017 to order. Let's start this Board Supervisor meeting with an invocation, please. Mr. Slade, do you mind kicking this thing off for us?
I would thank you for the state for giving us the blessings that will follow. Lord, thank you for the trust that we can place in you as our Creator, as the one who is in charge of everything and never caught off guard. I thank you that you have allowed our community to be the safe place that it is. You have given us and blessed us with first responders that keep us safe. Father, thank you for these men who have committed themselves to serving this community. I pray, Father, that you'll give them the wisdom to think they can make good and wise decisions. Help us today, Father, to live our lives in such a way that it pleases you and that we serve as a witness, as ambassadors for you in our lineups. Thank you, Lord, for all you do for us in Christ's name.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Slade. I appreciate that. Item number three is kind of a little bit out of order for our agenda, but we're going to bring out Mr. Buster Parker to begin with the bid opening. Good morning, Mr. Buster. How are you doing?
I'm doing good.
Good.
Doing good. Yeah, this is the first time I've ever been up this high on the agenda.
Well, I noticed you got up a little quicker today. You got a little more pep in your step.
Yeah, man.
So, I like it. Maybe that's the key, is it gets you up early and it kind of triggers you up a little bit.
That's correct. Okay.
All right, great. Tell us what we got early on the bid.
We're gonna have our bid opening on a large asphalt overlay. Our district state aid engineer, Mr. Butch Wells, is here who will handle that bid opening. And once they get the bids open, he and Jake are going to the back to check them in your office.
Yeah.
Took your office anyway. They're gonna go back there and check them, and if everything is in order and acceptable, they'll come back in here and make an award, which we've done that in the past, if everything is in good shape.
Okay.
We'll know after that, so at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Butch and Jake to...
This is... Give you my mic. Yeah.
Okay, this SAP project number SAP 6117, in parentheses S, consisting of base and edge repairs, leveling, overlay, striping, race paint markets, and signage from roads A through J. Engineers estimate this project is $6,579,459.40. We received a certified copy of notice publication. We received bid proposals from Dixon Bowen, District Responsibility Number 12, and they're from Brookhaven, Mississippi. APAC Mississippi, Inc., out of Jackson, Mississippi, District Responsibility Number 95. Debbie Blaine and Sons out of Minnoll, District Responsibility Number 11. And Adcamp, Inc., out of Jackson, Mississippi, District Responsibility Number 08034. Any other bids that you don't know about? Okay, the first will be open today. It's Dixon Bowen. This is not mine.
Insurance is Hartford Accident and Indemnity. Appears to be in order.
Okay, Dixon Bowen signed off on item number one. Affidavit 9 collusion is signed, no written duplicate is required. If verification number is in place, is signed. Proposal... Excuse me. Proposal is signed. Bid from Dixon Bowen. Next bid proposal is from APAC, Mississippi. Take this thing off, though. I'm gonna try to...
Need a sharper knife.
5% bid bond. Insurance is federal insurance companies. Appears to be in order.
Item number one is signed. Affidavit 9 collusion is signed, no written duplicate is required. If verification number is in place, is signed. Proposal is signed. Bid from APAC, Mississippi. Next is Debbie Blaine and Sons.
Bid bond is 5% bid bond. Insurance is Liberty Use Insurance Company. Appears to be in order.
Item number one is signed. Affidavit 9 collusion is signed, no written duplicate is required. If verification number is in place, is signed. Proposal is signed. Bid from Adcamp, Mississippi. Last bid is from Adcamp, Inc.
5% bid bond. Insurance is Travelers. Appears to be in order.
Item number one is signed. Affidavit 9 collusion is signed, no written duplicate is required. If verification number is in place, is signed. Proposal is signed. Bid from Debbie Blaine and Sons. Last bid is from Adcamp, Inc.
5% bid bond. Insurance is Travelers. Appears to be in order.
Item number one is signed. Affidavit 9 collusion is signed, no written duplicate is required. If verification number is in place, is signed. Proposal is signed. Bid from Adcamp, Inc.
736.
Seven million, 736,152.20. I think there's anticipation and that the board taking advice, but it's time to stick to the map.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Taking into consideration any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Passes. All right, item four on the agenda, public comments and recognition. First under item A is Carl from Motor Robles. Good morning, Carl. How are you?
Morning, good. How are y'all?
Good.
Good morning, Carl.
Appreciate y'all having me again. I've got some papers here. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, I appreciate you having me again. I just wanted to give you a quick update on our efforts that we discussed a few weeks ago in looking for candidate sites for fill-in coverage for the Public Safety Radio System. In that time, we've identified some sites with the help of emergency management and have gone out, looked at the sites, and as you can see in front of you, run some coverage maps on those sites. So, to kind of decode it for you, what you're looking at, when you look at the map, all the green is your existing coverage. Anything you see in bright purple would be what these sites add to your coverage, if that makes sense. So, I've got them in a certain order. The first three are all in the Lake Harbor area. There's three candidate sites up there. We have the Pisgah Water Tank, the Reservoir Water Tank right on the reservoir there, and then a Smeepa Tower that's by the Pisgah Tank. I'm sure you probably know where those are. Anyway, they all offer additional coverage, the best being the reservoir water tank. You can see where the bright purple is there. That's what you would add. Now, it seems to me it covers a good bit of the Lake Harbor area, but it, you know, it does leave a good bit of white space there, right, which is uncovered area. So, I think it covers the area we're concerned about, but I think it does, you know, again, obviously, y'all's decision is, you know, is the coverage gained worth the price paid for the site? And that's certainly at your discretion. And then lastly, the last map, the one in the back, covers the clear area and then also kind of the pocket area, the other two areas y'all wanted us to look at. Same thing applies. The bright purple is where coverage would be added. And again, also, I think the same thing applies. You're getting some coverage where you need it, but you still have a fair amount of white space there. So, you... Obviously, you can draw your own conclusions. What I would say, in my opinion, is you're not gaining a whole lot based on these sites, right, based on these water tanks. For the money you would spend to do these, I don't know that this is really worth your while. So, our engineers have gone back, and we think that the problem is, I'll try to keep this short, but we need a site that is a little bit more like your existing sites to help that, right? Not quite, not a very big site like you have everywhere else now, but something a little bit bigger than the compact site we're looking at. The problem is a lack of an amplifier on the tower. That's what we need to add. So, I wanted to show you this, just to show you that we're working on it and we've done some work. Unless you want to move on these, we would like to go back and do just a slight redesign with better sites to give you more of that white area covered in. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because this doesn't fix the problem.
Yeah, I agree with you. I agree with you.
The sheriff had asked for you to provide us with a map of our coverage area as is and then with the state sites added?
Right. We will provide that. I wanted to show y'all what these did and that it really didn't solve a lot of the problem. We will certainly provide that.
Okay.
The green just shows the...
I'm sorry, the Rankin County sites on.
Yeah, it doesn't have Mismun on this right here.
Yeah, correct. Exactly. So, I mean, so you'll find, right, in the... So, the closest Mismun Tower, at least to Lake Harbor, right, is up in... Up towards Canton, right? It's up that way. It doesn't provide a lot of additional coverage, but I will provide those maps. I apologize for not bringing those today. But it doesn't solve... I can tell you this, it doesn't solve the problem either.
Okay. I mean, it doesn't even really help us in southwest Rankin County either. I mean, that was...
Right, yeah. So, it covers a little bit of that, but you're right. It leaves a fair bit of... Leaves a fair bit of white. Yeah. Yeah, this is not me coming to you with, hey, this is the solution. Let's do it. This is... I just wanted to show y'all what we've done, where we're at, and I think we need to just take a step back and do something a little bit better. We need to change the configuration we're using, change the design.
All right.
But I wanted to show you the sites we're looking at, so you know what we're looking at and where we're thinking of going.
Okay.
So, I... Again, I'd like to come back. We're gonna... We're gonna a little bit go back to the drawing board, come back, and show you what we can come up with.
All right. Thank you, Carl.
Okay, thanks.
All right. All right, item B, Mr. Nick Wilson. Is Nick here?
No.
Okay. Okay, we'll skip over that. Let's go. Anything else under public comments? Ms. Janice, she's gone too. We're running out of people, aren't we? Nick missed his win. Item five, old business. All right, got a motion to approve by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Old business passes. Item six, under consent agenda. I know Ms. Laura stopped me in the hallway for a second. Did you want to clarify one thing?
I do. We had several items under road limits that are going to be surplus and taken to auction. We need to make a correction on asset 9527. That will be considered accounting as opposed to going to auction. And also, we need to add one that is not on here, which is asset number 719, which is a 2010's overall, which will go to Simpson.
Okay.
Make a motion to add to the agenda.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison to add those to the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. All right, so any other action on that or just go to straight with...
Make a motion. Motion approved.
Second.
Actually, got a motion to approve consent agenda by Mr. Morrison. I'm sorry, Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Consent agenda passes. Thank you very much. Item seven, Mr. Sullivan. Anybody here from Mr. Sullivan's office?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, so we got a motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. All right, by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. I saw Nick just walked in, so I kind of want to make a little adjustment here. I know the last couple meetings, we played some games with these agendas, but let me flip back around just for a second to add him in.
Why don't we let that go to the end? Because if it's gonna be a presentation, it may take a while.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that then.
All right.
Item eight, Ms. Herring. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm requesting approval of Axon Enterprises' sole source for Taser brand products for the Sheriff's Department.
Okay. Board wish to entertain a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item approves.
Thank you.
Good job, Bridget.
Thank you, Ms. Bridget. Item nine, Mr. Harrison.
Morning. How are y'all?
Morning.
Oh. I make a motion to approve work, accomplish, and schedule.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like signs.
I make a motion to approve items B through E.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrow to approve items B through E.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion?
What about our projects we're about to kick off over there?
Oh, bro, that's what I was gonna tell you, Jay. We've reviewed it, me and Buster, hey, out there. This is not gonna affect any of our projects. It's not what we're gonna be doing the work at, so...
What we did, South Pearson Road several years ago, we had to pay AT&amp;T because they said they purchased their right-of-way down through there. And so, do they not still have their... Do we buy it from them? Is this why they're having to get access, our permission now?
We think that they were selling us right-of-way. You know, maybe they did.
Well, we had to pay them for something.
When was it?
When we did the project, South Pearson project.
Like, oh, you see.
God, it's a long time ago.
Yeah. Yeah, I forgive me, but that was before my time.
So, if we paid them for it, how would that impact what they're asking us to do right now?
Yeah, if we assume that we purchased right-of-way from AT&amp;T, then we can give them access to what we bought, just like any other road right-of-way we got.
Okay.
But I don't know the difference, so...
I just agree. They made us pay them up front to relocate their utilities because they...
Because they just stare around for it.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
We need to check them.
No, we just give it away, just like we always do, I guess.
I mean, what is good to know, we may keep that hit on.
All right, further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Items B through E passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Great job presenting all that.
Yes, sir.
I didn't realize that Mr. Buster Parker's back up on item 10, twice in the same day?
Yes, sir.
I'll tell you what, you handled that first one so good, I'm gonna bring you back up for an encore.
Well, it's definitely flowing in his...
All right, so item eight.
Yes, sir. Okay, our 2016 guard rail installation and repair project that was all over the county, I'm recommending approval of pay request number two, which is the final on that project.
All right, got a motion by... Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Motion passes. Item B.
Item B, Foundation Farms, we recommend approval of that final flat this morning.
So moved.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign.
All right, thank you.
Item C.
Item C, Hamilton and Fanning, we recommend approval of that final flat, and we have a letter of credit in the amount of $30,445.14.
Okay.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, very much. Hey, Mr. Slade, I wanted to ask you on that, that kind of comes up what we talked about the other day, as far as any issues with the bank side of that, or...
We got...
You got it good, the way you're good with it.
Yes, sir.
Perfect. All right, Mr. Slade, public hearings. Item 11.
Item A is to set a public hearing for November 15. David Stevens rezoning request, District 1.
I make a motion, set the public hearing.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign.
Items B and C are to set public hearings on December 4 at 9:00. This would be Lazy D and R Creighton-Luggett rezoning.
All right, if we can, Mr. Slade, let's take them, these two individually.
All righty.
Because I'm not in favor of item B, so...
Okay, Lazy D Farms has, I was just informed, has withdrawn their request to set that public hearing.
Great.
And so, we will consider item B to be dispensed with.
Great, thank you. Item C then.
Item C is to set a public hearing for December the 4th, 9:00 a.m. for Creighton-Luggett. It's a rezoning request on Highway 25, District 4, Carson.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Item C passes.
Which one was the Lazy D that withdrew? Which one was that?
It was up there, that little small strip on the other side of Highway 25, near Scott County Line.
Was that it, talking about doing the fuel deal?
Mm-hmm. Public hearings, Mr. Slade, item D.
Yes.
Yeah, we had tabled it Friday, anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Item D is a public hearing on the Neely Trucking and Excavating Conditional Use Permit at West Petros Road. This is District 1. Roy Neely, Sr., Neely Trucking and Excavating, is seeking a conditional use permit to expand an existing 38-acre mine pit called the Parrot Pit. With the addition of a 10-acre parcel off of West Petros Road, the existing mine is located on South Pearson Road. There will be no access to the mine from West Petros Road. Trucks will enter through the existing pit on South Pearson. Copy of an application to amend the existing permit and the SWIP was filed with the EQ is included in the application. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Neely Trucking and Excavating Conditional Use Permit. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'll be appropriate to take action.
Well, I want to... What I've been asked and what I've... The different ones that have called, what the conditions are set. Renee, have you got any conditions or anything?
On the existing permit for Parrot, if you said the roads had... The county roads had to be cleared.
Hey, flip your mic on, Mr. Renee, please.
On the existing permit for Parrot, when that was approved, the conditional use application, it stated that the county roads had to be kept clear, clean and clear. That was the only conditions that were set at that time.
Okay. What hours of operation?
There were none specifically set out for that one.
Okay. Well...
So, do we have a pit already there once?
Well, that South Pearson Road, that's an existing pit. They're just asking to expand.
Right, but this actual location has not been mined previously.
Yeah, this location has been mined, by the Parrot.
No.
Not the 10 acres.
Okay. Now, Jonathan started digging on it. Right, but I mean, you referencing... I was wondering why you was referencing Parrot or Parrot or...
It's an expansion of an existing pit.
Okay.
It's fresh acreage.
So, this is really a Neely pit, but...
Yeah. All right. It's closer to West Petros.
Okay.
Okay, these are some questions that I've been asked, and so I want to get the answers to them. And is Mr. Goodman here? Okay, I thought so. Okay, these... So, I'm gonna have to answer these. All right, you're planning on... I need to hear just exactly what you're wanting out of this, if you don't mind, come up, because I'm gonna be called and have to answer these questions. Because the questions, you know, what they don't... Well, go ahead and state your name and...
Good morning. Curtis Goodman.
Get your name and address, if we know.
118 Bulldog Drive, Earl, Mississippi.
Okay. Now, what... I know it's been kind of chopped up from some previous, I guess you'd call it, mining. Now, you're planning on mining this down to a certain point, and then what's the...
Reclaiming, and I boarded horses, and I had a couple of washouts that I tried to fix, and they blew out again. And then I made a deal with Jonathan, and I leased it to him, and he never went through this process for the permit and kind of left me hanging, and it's... Something's got to be done either way.
Right.
To... I have large holes.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Yeah. And I want to reclaim it and board horses again, is what I want to do.
Okay, so you're gonna turn it basically back into pasture, but you want to get it smoothed up, leveled?
Yes, sir.
Et cetera.
It won't be a permanent pit.
Right.
So, the... Where the barn is now, is it gonna be going away in a hill cut down, or how are you gonna do it?
I'm thinking I'm gonna move the barn and put it back up.
Okay. Because where the holes are, it's already kind of low anyway, right? Because, I mean, that's... You're really gonna mine the hill.
Right, the highest parts. But it'll have to be leveled all out.
I'm with you.
Because there's no level spots anywhere, really.
Yeah, I got you.
And as far as coming... This is the next question. Coming to West Petros, the road, your property goes all the way to the fence there, West[1731.58] your property goes all the way to the fence there, to West Petros?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, how's that gonna be left? I mean, there's a certain setback you require to have to leave, so it can be sloped and whatever.
That, like he says, that's not a higher part of it, so whatever the right of way is, we'll leave it.
Pretty much, it's gonna be left alone, okay. Um, I know you've got some calls also, Jay, you got any, any questions, you're gonna get some?
Well, the only thing that I, you know, there was concern about the dust, but I don't know if there's anything. Do you have any adjacent, does everybody live right there at it?
I talked to the lady straight across the road.
Yeah.
And I told her, she asked about the morning operation and stuff like that, and I told her I would talk to Mr. Neely and see what we could do, but, um, I'm, me and my mother will be the most affected by the dust, and, uh, and like I say, it's just temporary, so I'm, it's not gonna bother.
What's the lady's name that lives across from?
Denise, I'm not sure about her.
Last name, okay.
Not Hamilton, is it?
Middleton?
Milton?
No, it's, uh, Aldridge, Denise Aldridge.
Milton, too, no, Aldridge.
I should, you know.
Was Milton there, but I, I must have Milton not happened.
I, I think there was some confusion, though. Originally, I thought, I think they thought it was gonna be on the other side of the road, but, so there really won't be any need to fool with West Petros at all.
No, not many hauling there. Um, what's the other question? Oh, okay, so hours of operation, that's what we need to, you, you obviously had some, uh, conversation about that. What's a fair hours of operation?
She said she's retired, so I'm not sure what time she gets up, but they're gonna start in the back. So I don't think that's gonna affect her as far as morning time.
Well, Buck, I know y'all here, so, uh, I know they're not gonna wanna haul on Sunday. So, and, um, they don't wanna start it to crack before daylight. But come on, come up, Buck, 'cause I like you being involved in this.
You're just getting pulled up here no matter what.
Right.
Well, I'd like to make a suggestion.
Just give you, give your name and state your name.
Buck Neely, with Neely Trucking and Excavating.
And address.
Uh, six fifty-two Highway four sixty-nine North.
Okay.
Long.
Alright, give me, give us some ideas.
Uh, I was a rec- you know, operation, we recommend from seven to five. I mean, that's, that's typical for us. You know, we don't, we don't, and we don't, no night hauling, no Sundays, we try not to work Sundays.
Well, and the night hauling, that was another question they had, and I, I said, well, we're gonna put that down, it won't be night hauling, and we're gonna, you know, I'm telling you, you know, we're gonna hold you to this now, cause I don't wanna hear flack from them.
Well, I know, actually, I, I think you might have had a project in the past, your other pit, that was like at night, you had a special job you had to do or something.
We did, we had one with Yates and, um, Warren Construction, when they done from, uh, Crossgate exit to, um, Children Road.
Coming up in the future that you, you know, pop up, it'd be good, you let us know, so we can address it.
I would have to, I would come back to the board, and, you know, maybe seek permission if that was the case.
Yeah.
But I don't foresee that.
Alright, you're gonna do seven and five, seven to five weekday, what about a Saturday?
Uh.
You know, same thing?
Same thing, if we can get it, if not, we can move it to eight, I don't have a problem with that.
You know, if you could do that, I think that would be a slight compromise, some of them. Uh, they feel like, you know, you've compromised with them. I understand your need to go with seven, but on Saturday morning, I think that would be, uh, good on your part.
How is your other pit going, coming along? You still have a good bit of room?
No, sir, I mean, I have a lot of room that we're, we're actually filling in with some material. Um, but as far as material, we're, we're currently on the last leg of the material.
Okay.
So, uh, you know.
Okay. So, conditions would be then, Renee, hours of operation be seven to five during the week, uh, eight to five on Saturday, no Sunday hauling.
No night hauling.
Night hauling, no Sunday, no night, um.
I really liked the way you did those trees on the edge of the road. That, that was a good idea.
Um, I can't think anything else, the, the dust, obviously, the dust is gonna be, if, if it becomes an issue, we're gonna hear about that.
We'll address that, we have a water truck.
And, and, um, you know, the more you come to the, um, be the east side, that's, that's where the, you're gonna be more in touch with West Petros.
Correct.
So.
Just keep the water truck close.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
On the, closer to the east side is less material, the most material is like from the barn and some, excuse me, south.
Okay.
So we're just, basically, we took all that because it was all a mess.
Right.
Been left a mess, so, and there's, we have a little market for the sugar sand, the white sugar sand, and so we took it all to make it all universal, and we've been, you know.
How long, how long do you think it'll take to mine this? That's gonna be the next question, somebody.
Uh.
I know you can't really say, but I know you got work going, coming up.
Yes, I, I, I'd say a couple of years.
So you're only boarding any horses for a while?
They put thirty-six months on it for revisiting.
Yeah, on condition, yeah.
Well, I think it'll work itself out, cause Mr. Goodman's gonna warm out there anyway, you know? If nothing else, they can haul it over to their other pit. I think it'll take care of itself, don't you?
Well, yeah, but I know they do like to know that there is a, uh, light in a tunnel.
Okay.
And they, and they'd have to come back, and that way, if they had continual problems, which I don't foresee it, and this takes, particularly because of what you're trying to accomplish, Mr. Goodman, and I know you'll, uh, like Mr. Bishop said, you, you're gonna want it done right and left right, cause, cause you've got future plans for this, so. But I think, uh, I don't think it'd be out of line to say that.
This takes a couple of years, thirty-six, can I try to revisit?
Three years, okay.
Three year.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be ample time.
Only reason I say that, cause you still gotta open mine adjacent to it, you know, so.
Right.
It's not like.
Kinda like what we done with Mr. Self, we, we pre-bought some material from him, and when our agreement ended with him, we moved that material that we had pre-purchased to our site, our, our existing mine.
Yeah, that pond you built for him?
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright.
There's more to that story, I'm sure.
Uh, yes, yeah.
More of that story.
Alright, is, uh, anyway, I make a motion to approve under these conditions. Um, and I just, I'm just asking you to monitor the, the dust and the noise situation, and think about the people around there, and I understand, you know, we got, you gotta keep moving dirt to keep growing, but unfortunately, it seems like every time we get a place, it's, it's because Rankin County's getting so heavily populated.
This is it, I think. Is there anything left over there? I know that there was, uh, one of the family members, um, had something that was in that little pocket up there. Is there any dirt left?
Uh, Curtis' mom got some property adjacent to him.
Okay.
That, that if we come back on this, we would do, we would ask for the same conditions to access it.
Alright.
Cause we know Petros is underground, a school bus and a dump truck will not pass.
No, we're not getting back on West Petros.
Oh, you had to do that other deal like you did before.
Right, yeah. But no, that's the only other property that we would be interested in.
Alright.
Yeah, alright.
Alright, thank you very much. So I got a motion on the, on the floor by Mr. Morrison to approve?
Under those conditions.
Under those conditions.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? Motion passes. Item E, under other, Mr. Slay.
This is a simple acknowledgement of receipt of a Pila Hachi Commercial Properties' one-year warranty for the condition of the road called, called East Business Park Drive. It's out on the east side, Brandon, it's just outside the city limits, this is Edmond Turnage.
Okay.
Uh, they have completed that road.
So moved.
They have issued the one-year warranty.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow to approve?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign?
Next item is an action to declare county surplus property and authorize the county to, uh, the county administrator to publish the advertisement for sealed bids. Uh, if you'll look at, in your packet, gentlemen, item eleven F, you'll see a road segment called Smith Street that is in Robin Hood, along with a legal description that's been prepared by Ms. Buster. This, uh, uh, quickly, this is Robin Hood, this is a street that was dedicated to the county at the time of the filing of the plat. It was never completed, it, there is no road there, so it is a segment of a public roadway as defined on the plat that the county has no need of. It, it's a road to nowhere. And so, we're gonna declare it surplus, allow Ms. Laura to file a notice of publication in the newspaper, and allow any adjacent property owners who might be interested in acquiring it to be able to acquire it. And, and so, that's the process, we declare it surplus, we don't need it, we open it up for bids, we'll open the bids up at the appropriate time and see who wants to buy the property.
I'm gonna make a suggestion, and my, my goal here, obviously, is try to get what expenses we can back, what the Parkers have spent, your time, and I realize there's a certain threshold with what the property's actually worth down in Robin Hood, too, and I don't want to own this in the event somebody does want to purchase it. You have any inclination, Tim, what your numbers may be as far as the survey work y'all done, roughly? You don't have, you don't have any exact figure?
I don't, I thought you have established that after this.
I, I'm gonna go on a limb here and say about the motion, fifteen hundred minimum?
I think that would cover it.
That means, whoever's gonna have to, he's gonna publish that, the minimum's gonna be fifteen hundred, if you want it, you're gonna have to get.
A lot?
For that truck of land.
For that, for that one little piece?
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't sound like much.
Well.
Must be a little small piece.
What happens?
It's a road, it's a roadway, wouldn't it?
Oh, okay.
It's a roadway.
It's fifteen one hundredths of an acre.
Bob.
I'm just trying to get a little bit faster.
What happens if nobody's willing to pay it?
We're still stuck with it, you know?
So then.
We're out, we're out the money regardless.
Then why put the money on there?
Well, because I think, I think there's a, there's an activity out there that, that somebody will, will move on. I did, the property to the west was purchased, guy wants to build two homes on it.
Alright.
So I think he wants to do it, so I think he, he's, he's communicated that.
Okay.
He, he's, he's an active.
I just didn't wanna put it out there, and then I have zero bids.
There is a risk, there is a risk, you know, and I'm, I'm negotiating on the fifteen hundred. You think, you wanna come down a little bit, but I'm trying to get a little money back.
As with all bids, we are able to accept or reject any and all bids.
I'll go with Bob's.
Alright, so got a motion by?
We have fifteen hundred to the minimum reserve on it, whatever you wanna file it.
Okay. So, motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop, worded that way. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? Thank you, Mr. Slay. Ms. R, Ms. Laura Oster for item number twelve.
First item is authority to accept a two thousand and seventeen commercial Pierce fire truck from Emergency Equipment Professionals, uh, for the Florence Volunteer Fire Department. That's three hundred and forty-two thousand.
They just gave it to them?
Yeah. Hey, Brett, can, uh, tell me just, just out of pure curiosity for myself, you know roughly the specs on that truck? Tank, GPM capacity, something?
Two thousand G, uh, two thousand poly tank, uh.
Just ballpark, I mean, I was just curious in my mind, yeah, well, Reggie's here.
Reggie came through.
Two thousand gallon poly tank, uh, fifteen hundred GPM pump, um.
Did you, did we bid it equipped already? Hose, stuff like that?
No, did not.
So that's an additional cost to them?
It's additional cost, they're replacing a truck, the, uh, what, pardon?
Yeah, it didn't matter, I, I just, for my mind's sake, just wanted to hear.
This was the, uh, the truck that we did, it's last year in budget, but anyway, uh, Florence paid half on the truck.
Okay.
The county matched the other half.
I knew they paid half, so I was, that's why I didn't know if the equipment was in there or not.
No, equipment was not in there, no. Cause they're pulling equipment off of the, uh, the other truck.
Shouldn't be much of an expense on that same side, right?
Right.
Alright, good.
Florence was capped out at a hundred and seventy thousand. So, there's a little, a little extra on us, a couple thousand extra on us.
That's good.
To complete the truck.
Yeah, I, I was just.
The truck came with AED, thermal imaging camera, I mean, you know, the NFPA standard stuff, but I know as far as hose and stuff like that.
What kind of camera was on that?
I think it's the new Scout MX two, I think it's what we spec'd in there.
Just that one? What about the Scout three?
See how he gets?
It hadn't come out yet.
He had his birthday this weekend, he feels really good about himself, you know? A lot of people lost money thinking he wouldn't get to this age, but he's here now, now, so he's here.
What about the old truck, do we get any money for it?
It is actually owned by the City of Florence, so.
Just putting that in the straight reserve fleet?
It's, uh, on its last leg fleet.
I got you.
Like, if, if we can get it out the door without it having to be towed, we're gonna be ahead of schedule.
That's a good thing, it does belong to the City of Florence.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I was trying to be polite, but since you asked, I'm gonna answer that question, so.
That, that was it, I just, just curious.
Don't worry, we probably paying the insurance on it.
You're full of all, you're full of all type of positivity.
We are, see?
Yeah.
Alright, got a motion?
I make, I make the motion.
Alright, so got a motion set by Mr. Morrison, uh, second by Mr. Bishop. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? Item A passes. Item B, Ms. Oster.
This is the, uh, approval for a pay application on our new Rankin County Courthouse facility. It's number four to Chris Albritton Construction Company in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-seven cents, and authority to issue that check.
So moved.
Alright, got a motion by Mr. Morrow?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? Item B passes, additional business.
First item that we have is the discussion of a potential action on including Puckett Volunteer Fire Department, uh, their firemen to the volunteer, uh, workers' compensation.
But it's.
What we're trying to accomplish here is that right now, the Village of Puckett has, has it, and was it up to this year, at one time, all the insurance was covered by the, the, the Puckett's fire, Puckett's insurance, and it was all a sweetheart deal, and something happened, I can't remember what the legality of it, and it, and they forced, uh, the fire department, broke out their insurance for their equipment, broke out their workers' comp, you know, so we've got, we're, we're trying, trying to do is solve this legal issue and a potential liability problem for the, for them and Village, so.
Correct. Real basic, um, fundamentally, uh, Puckett and Pila Hachi are two departments where there's a little bit of a unique situation, and that's because they have municipal boundaries that are part of their response area, Pila Hachi and Puckett. Both of those departments have separate contracts with the respective municipalities to provide fire protection under contract, okay? Pila Hachi has their deal, there are no issues with it, Puckett has a deal, it's an existing contract that's been in place since, actually, since two thousand and two, and that contract has been in need of some sort of adjustment, both the town and the department both feel like there's, there's a need to talk about the response responsibilities and the funding mechanisms and all of that other, okay? So, under the contract that exists and is in place, Puckett has been paying for the department's vehicle insurances and for their workers' comp. The town has been responsible for that, okay? The, uh, the eligibility of the department for those coverages has been through Puckett's association, I think with MML, with the Municipal League, and that, that coverage has steadily been going up in cost over time, and it's now starting to pinch the, the town of Puckett financially, and so they're asking questions, well, you know, And so they're asking questions, well, you know, what can we do to try to address some of this? The department is sensing that their funding mechanisms are going to be adjusted, and they're trying to figure out how to make that work for them. So there's an impasse. And Mr. Bob and I have been working closely with both parties, although the county is not directly involved in that process. The department can decide, the fire department can decide how they're going to respond within the boundaries of Puckett. Whether they're going to respond within the boundaries of Puckett, they've been, the, the, the department has been talking to the Rating Bureau and the Officer Fire, of the State Fire Commissioner, and getting advice from them. And so it's just been sort of a, what are we going to do, what are we going to do situation? So Mr. Bob and I have been meeting with them, uh, trying to help walk them through that and see if we can get to an agreement. One way that we feel like we can get to an agreement is, and, and the truth of the matter is, those fire department personnel do not, volunteers do not need to be covered under the municipal workers' comp. That's a problem. Because the vast majority of their response area is not inside the town of Puckett. It's in their response area that's way out in the county. My concern is that with them being covered under that comp plan, which is really identified as the Town of Puckett's comp plan, is that if we get a fireman hurt on a county call, we may have an issue. We may have a workers' comp carrier saying, why are we covering this guy outside of the municipal boundaries? And we need to fix that. Uh, and the way we fix that, in my opinion, is we move them over to the county. The cost to the county is six hundred and.
About five hundred and fifty, estimated cost.
Five hundred and fifty dollars a year to put all twenty-five of their guys under our comp coverage. So it's a minimal expense, uh, and it, and it satisfies me from a legal standpoint that, that, that they're much better covered. And we've got what, we've got what we want there from a comp. A little more tricky when you start talking about the vehicle side of the equation, but that does need to be discussed. Uh, the county's coverage is through VFIS. Bonfire, Firefighters Insurance Services, something like that. Uh, VFIS provides, uh, all of the vehicle coverages for all of the county-owned equipment. And I think some of the department-owned equipment too, if I recall correctly. Well, Puckett's, all of Puckett's equipment up to now has been covered under a MML-issued Town of Puckett policy to the tune of around seventy-three hundred dollars a year. And that is the big ticket item for Puckett. Bear in mind, Puckett does not get any ad valorem. All of their ad valorem is kept by the county, we maintain their roads. They get sales tax only, so they have some pretty tight restrictions within their budget that make it very difficult for them to fund that, that level of coverage for the department, admittedly.
Boy, you're doing a great job selling this.
Well.
Not better than Bob.
This has been.
He missed you last week, yeah.
This has been a two-month-long saga, to be quite honest with you. And so I've, I've had to get immersed in it. And, and I'm not trying to carry Puckett's water, I'm trying to help us all understand the bind that we find ourselves in with respect to that department and how it operates. The truth of the matter is, we got to have that department.
That's right.
We got to have that coverage. And Puckett's in the deal, and, and it's hard to get them out of the deal because they cannot fund their own department.
My thing though, I just question you. So all this vehicle is their big deal. They probably got more vehicles for a little department than any in the, take them county.
Precisely, and that's where I was headed just then.
Yeah.
We've asked them, go back, look at your equipment list, figure out which of the vehicles that you have that you absolutely have to have something like full coverage on. And let's go back and re-lick this calf and see if we can't get that vehicle cost down. Alright, so here's how we typically do it, guys. All of our other departments, all of their vehicle coverages are paid for through rebate funds. We hold the rebate money, and that is covered under rebate, alright? So they just get a net, actually, we give them a full amount of rebate, but if we, it's, it's covered by the county, but the department, it's funds that the department has earned or acquired that are used for the, for that cost. We would propose that Puckett be no different. That whatever the cost for, for putting them on the county's vehicle coverage, whatever that cost is, we work it out with them, and they end up with less funds coming back on the rebate side, okay? They need to work something out with the town, ultimately, on what the town is going to pay to have that department respond. They got to work that out, and that's not something that we can force.
Craig, let me ask you, do, do we have anything in regards to Puckett as far as mutual aid agreements with the county?
Yeah, I think so.
We, we have a good document for that. That was the only thing I just maybe asked you to re-look at, to be sure that the mutual aid policy that lets them go out into the county is good.
We have a county contract that was on the consent agenda this morning.
Yeah, I just want to be sure that, because, because it's going to be some gray area on that city of Puckett out into the county, and that can be done very simply with that mutual aid agreement, where we're taking that resource and ducking it out there. I'm sure you've got them in other departments, right? The other voluntary departments, like Florence, for example, that has their own city, stuff like that, so.
That's right.
They actually signed a.
And so it's clear that, I'm, I'm sorry Brett.
They actually signed a contract with, between the fire department and the municipality, and then they turn around and sign a contract between the county and, and then, that way if whoever, if I need resources from one department, I mean, it's one phone call away, I can pull resources from wherever and send them, you know, wherever in the county.
And you, you looked over our.
Yes, sir. We have, we have a contract with every department, whether they respond in a municipality or not. We have a contract with every department, because they have county response area. They have a separate contract with the town. We don't want to get in the middle of that. We want them to work that out. Unfortunately, we're in the middle of it because it bleeds over into what that department's doing for us. My proposal is that we get them, we make them look more like every other county department. VFIS is the carrier.
Yeah, I'm doing.
We need to take care of that out of the rebate. We need to put them on our workers' comp as with others, and Bob and.
The building?
Yeah, are you, we.
We're, we're still talking on the building, we're still talking. And, and let me, let me ask y'all a question, do we want to do this in executive session this time?
It is acquisition of property, uh.
Let's, let's hold off on that and just talk about that.
Well, let me ask you now, so, Puckett's been paying part of the insurance?
Oh, right.
Okay, are they going to pay any of it? Are we just taking them completely out of it?
Well, I guarantee you, once it gets in our name, they're off the hook.
No, it's not that. I mean, the problem is, is it's contract.
Alright.
It, it was in lieu of, services in lieu of the, the payment thing, so really all, just disregard the insurance now. The insurance is going to get paid, it's coming out of Puckett Volunteer Fire Department Fund. Ever how much Puckett thinks it's worth the fire service is, that's between Puckett and the village of, of determine that number. We're not supplementing it, we can't supplement it because we've got eighteen other fire departments to contend with, I'm not proposing that. We're, we're trying to leave them, but, but just disregard the insurance cost.
Alright.
Puckett needs to get rid of some equipment. I can't tell them to do it, I can strongly suggest that's what they need to do to get that number down. I mean, I mean, now they're going to have to cook a whole lot more chickens, you know, down in Puckett, you know, to, to have pay for it. If that's what they want to do?
Fine.
Yeah, I mean, that's their, that's their choice. But that's what we're trying to help them achieve, and I, and I'll bring you up to date on the building side of the executive session.
Alright, so motion by Mr. Moore?
So, like, motion to put them on the workman's comp policy is what we're asking for today.
You got the full description.
So a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign. Great. Before we go into Nick, uh, Mr. Buster, you ready for that? Alright, so do we need to add that under additional business, or can we just go straight into, Mr. Buster coming back with the bid openings?
We can just go back up, under here.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Buster, three times in a day. And ice you down, it's over.
Alright.
Okay. The bids have been checked and everything appeared to be in order. So what I have here is a, is a board order for the president to sign, assuming that you approve this. Now, uh, the amount of county funds that's needed, needed is seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. You know, we had been talking somewhere in the neighborhood, over a million, about a million four. But, uh, that's the amount of money that the county would have to put up. And I had discussed with you the possibility of advanced credits, which is utilizing the contribution that comes to Rankin County on a monthly basis. Uh, I was just, just talking to your road manager about this, and I don't know what y'all's thinking is, but it might be advantageous for the county to just put this money up and leave your state aid money accumulated.
It's less than what we thought, isn't it?
Yeah, it's seven hundred, that's a pretty good deal.
We can, we can just split it with y'all, right? Engineering Service pay half, Rankin County pay half, and go on from there.
I, 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 I don't think that's it.
That's, uh, that's less than you had figured.
Yes, sir.
You had figured so.
Yes, sir. We had originally been talking about a, a million four.
And advantageous when you say, I guess, I guess we're getting that saving because, uh, the petroleum is so low, the cost of it's so low in the asphalt, and then coming down the road in future, uh, state aid projects, odds are it's going to be higher expense, it's going to cost more money.
Well, that's true, and if you go with the advanced credits, like, say you get about a hundred and ten thousand dollars a month, I believe, something like that. So you would eat that up until you met this obligation, then it would continue on, you know, you continue to get that. But I think it would better, no, I don't know why I say I think, but anyway, not knowing what type of projects might come along, or whatever the case may be, something comes up on the state aid road that we need to get something done, it would appear to me, if you're in agreement with it, for the county to go ahead and cut a check for this amount, and then not miss with, uh, any of your advanced credit money, so that would make.
Does this, does this money come out of Roden Bridge?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion that we go ahead and.
Would you want to do that, uh, can you do it, uh, I mean, it's a really, big picture, a small amount, but I mean, would you, could you do a portion of it?
Is our, is our money coming on the front end or the back end? I guess, is it, when it's paid out?
The state aid money that comes in is on a monthly basis.
Okay. So as they do the work, they go and split work orders in, you approve the work orders, and we cut them a check?
Yeah, so we need, need to have it all up front then, yeah.
Yeah, I would suggest.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, did you award the bid, or just straight motion on that?
Straight motion on that too, who, who got the little bid?
W E Blaine and Sons.
Okay.
Are we at that portion now?
Yes, sir.
Alright, we're going to put it all in one motion? Man, they left a lot on the table, we sure they're going to be able to do this? I mean, that's five hundred thousand that.
Yeah, they left.
I mean, our projected bid was five hundred thousand more than what they bid, that's not very often that we have somebody come in.
I'm glad it was this time.
It's good to be on the low number.
The surety bond with?
There's a little bit of hunger out there right now.
Liberty Mutual.
I think they're good standing, let's do it, we'll see.
Alright, so we got a motion by Mr. Moore.
Change your ring, come back and hit us up with, make up for this.
Alright, so Bob, you got the motion with the, uh.
I approve W E Blaines as well as coming out of, uh, Roden Bridge for seven hundred and fifty, whatever number.
Okay, so we got a motion by Mr. Moore for that? Second, second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion?
Thirty-seven.
Seven thirty-seven.
Yeah, the amount of money is seven thirty-seven, nine hundred.
Okay. So we got a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Bishop.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
When are they going to start? That's going to be the next question, I've already been asked.
I've been asked that question.
Once it came out in the paper, it's already been asked.
Yes, the road manager's already jumped me about that.
Not only that, you left off the most important road, so, I mean, whatever we start, I know which one's going to be on the first.
Okay. Fair enough, but to answer when to start, I really can't, there's a lot of paperwork that has to be performed right now, so.
All for, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign. Motion passes, thank you, Mr. Buster.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
I've been asked that.
Our additional business, uh, we'll come back up to, uh, Mr. Wilson, you ready to go? How are you doing, Nick? Good morning.
Sorry to make you wait, man. Said sorry to make you wait, but I figure a lot of these people didn't want to sit through this.
That's all, that's okay. Go ahead, tell us about it, Nick.
Uh, basically, we've been in discussion with the different board members about our website, about wanting to do a, a refresh to it and address certain functionality that's not, the, not working now, or never was working on the site. And I've been talking to our vendor EG, we've been working on the SMS feature that Jay mentioned, and we think we've got it working, we're testing it today. And I'm doing a, a meeting with them Wednesday to discuss the, um, booking of facilities. But today, they wanted to give a, a short presentation to, to you all to show the new designs on websites, show y'all what they can do with websites, and just give y'all an idea of what, what they're going to be able to do for us going forward, if we stay with them, if we use them as a vendor. If, if y'all are open to that.
I saw the, I, I looked at the website that one you sent us, I like it, I think it's some potential here to get us further up on the curve if we're comfortable with the way they treat us in the past.
The link you sent was good, so.
You all did see the link? Uh, they actually have a, a go-to meeting set up, they want to, they wanted to project it and go through a few things and actually get them on the phone and give y'all a chance to ask questions to them if y'all want to do. If y'all have time for that.
Well, I, I just hate Steve's not here, but whatever y'all want to do, I'm good.
Put it off for the next one, will you, for Steve? I mean, I'm, I, I don't want to really have any major questions on it, other than maybe let's say stir up something else in their proposal or discussion.
I guess they haven't hit me with anything just earth-shattering and different, um, we can, we can skip the whole reservation they wanted to give. I can get the, the newer links that we're going to present today, send to y'all, and, and let y'all just kind of look over them and maybe give a consensus of what y'all think are the better links and the, 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 y'all want to go with.
He'll, he'll, yes.
Send us the link, or you want to.
I definitely, you know, uh, well, man, I'll be honest with you, I'm going to have a hard time committing to doing anything, uh, now, going forward because they've not made good on what they said they were going to do originally. And that was a major piece of what we were supposed to get.
Right, and I, I've, I've gone to bat with them on, on the two things you mentioned.
Yeah.
And we've actually looked at other companies, to move to another company and do it from scratch.
Well, I'm not saying I want to move.
No, no, I know, I know, I know.
I want to get it working.
But it, it, we can get it, if we can get it working with them, we can, but it would be significantly more if we moved somewhere else with it.
You want them to, you want them to put in the place what we paid for it originally?
Exactly.
Right.
If they want.
And that was, that was years ago, and I, I've actually talked to them about that.
What'd they say?
Uh, they initially said they don't do the, um, the, um, ability to book the facilities. But they also came back and they said Rusty had worked with somebody previously, years ago, about it, and then never moved forward on it. So they're supposed to come to me Wednesday with their whole presentation on what they talked about.
Well, I have, uh, some reliable sources over here that were involved with all this, so I'm sure I'm not the only one that remembers this.
Oh, I fully agree, I.
Impression that the booking would be active and useful when they got finished.
That's true.
Very strong impression.
Are you going to the meeting Wednesday? You said you were meeting with him Wednesday?
Well, not, not physically meeting with him, like, tele, uh, teleconference.
They're from Utah or something, they go.
You can hop on a conference call, dude.
I'll be glad to, uh, converse with them, but I'd much rather all of us be involved during that.
I got plenty, can you?
I, I can, I can nail down a time for a conference call and we, I can get.
Well, I'd say in our next meeting, hopefully you have some of this resolved, and when they show us something, Steve will be here, and we can do it all then. Y'all agree with that?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
You okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Alright.
Yep.
Let's do it.
Alright, thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
We've got our acquisition agent on the Gunner Road project here. Aren't we done with that yet? We're working hard.
Three hundred of them.
I think we've got a couple of matters to, uh, help you guys with.
We got to get you on the agenda, we can move you much quicker in the game, huh?
He's, he's so familiar, sitting back there, asked, uh.
I like, I like sitting back there so I know what's going on.
I hear you.
He's got.
He knows whether he wants to get up or not.
You know what's going on now, after sitting through this?
Just by way of update, uh, we've begun to do acquisitions on the Gunner Road project, and I think we've bought four or five of the properties that we needed. So far, I think there's eighty-nine on it. Uh, what we have today is two more waiver evaluations, which is like the appraisal of the property, um, an establishment, adjust compensation on those two properties so that we can move forward with an offer.
Mr. President, we can just simply add this to the agenda as two items to be approved by the board. We'll call them EJCs.
Okay.
On the Gunner Road project for Peoples and Freedmen.
Alright, so first we need a motion to add it to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
To move.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Bishop to add him to the agenda, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign. Alright, so now, potential action.
To approve the Peoples and Freedmen's establishment of just compensation on Gunner Road.
I should approve.
Sure.
Alright, got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry to make you wait. Alright, Mr. Slade, anything executive session-wise?
We, I've got a quick update on a litigation matter for you.
Okay, great.
Personnel and acquisition of property.
Executive session.
Alright, so we got a motion by Mr. Moore for executive session.
Is this going to be about justice court?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
We have litigation, personnel, and acquisition of property.
I, I, I'm sorry.
Alright, second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign.
Oh, yeah, you been waiting on this?
I've been doing it, taking this.
Laura, you going to hurt my feelings.
I haven't even seen that thing.
Oh, you been waiting for this? You been waiting on this? I didn't get my ARP letter in, you know, so.
You take eight or nine, you know, single A, two A, whatever size batteries you want. Problem that is.
Well, I'm glad I provided you a little enjoyment, you know.
It's hard, son.
We can plug in, it'd be phenomenal. Well, the rest of them, it doesn't. But, and the problem with this is the daggone batteries, if they had some deal where you could take your mask, or it's going to be premium, you set your mask and then plug it in, or it's stay charged, and you do it with good, I'm for it. I just don't like, I don't like the battery deal.